I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting on order and start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, good morning. We have a few people buzzing in here. If we hesitate at all to get a name, please let me know if you don't have a name, Denise, for the minutes. Next, I will ask for the approval of the agenda. Before we do that, I would like to move discussion on non-elected employee salaries above action on compensation board, so move that up two spaces.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
I will second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payment of June 3, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for June 30, 2020.
I will second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permits. I have two utility permits. Before we go there, we have a phone number. 7190. Phone number ending in 7190. If you can tell me who you are for the minutes.
John's on the run, Green Iowa.
Thank you, John.
There's an, oh, all right.
Okay, now we're to the utility permits.
There's another one down below. Oh, all right, all right, sorry. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve utility permit UT-20-24 for the underground installation by Heart of Iowa Communications.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And then I'll make a motion to approve utility permit number UT-20-25, 025, also for underground installation for, by Heart of Iowa.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Secondary Roads, Taylor, you're up. Okay.
Okay.
Well, next we have is the approval of Transportation Title VI Program Review.
This is just an approval, all the Title VI stuff, me and John have been working on, you know, he's the Title VI guy, I'm the ADA. Just something they wanted signed. Just kind of approves that he came to us, talked to us.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the Transportation Title VI Program Review.
I will second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is the embargo of Highway S-75.
So in today's day and age, nobody follows detours anymore. They use their GPS, so same thing as last year, they closed Highway 14. Although this year our road failed within a day, so it's pretty disappointing. It is like one of our oldest roads in the county, too. So I talked to BJ, asked, you know, we kind of discussed what to do, and he wanted to try an embargo instead of a speed limit. If it doesn't work, then, because you know, we can't enforce the embargo, that's motor vehicle. So we'll, we'll see how it goes, and I guess if we need to do a speed limit again, we can. We can always close the road if we have to, but I don't want to do that either.
Can you explain to me who's all embargoed on there and who's exempt?
It would be everything over 10 tons except farm equipment, I believe is the way it was written.
Okay.
And you can get exceptions from us for any, you know, for any reason, you can't take a different route, let us know. And we'll go through that, see if it's okay. But yeah, and I ran this thing until Highway 14's open because, yeah, that's a long time. They were thinking, you know, mid-September.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Quite a while.
And we don't exactly have the funding to just repave our road either.
Right.
I think I programmed it for 2022, but.
And then that's a shared project with Grundy County then, is that correct?
Yes. Yep.
And have you talked to the engineer over there?
I have, yep.
So they've kind of made that agreement to 2020, 2022?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the resolution to embargo County Highway S-75.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Lance.
Renee first.
Renee, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have is Floyd Hammer, an outreach. Let's get Floyd on there. Hang on, Floyd, we don't have you unmuted yet. Okay, go ahead, Floyd.
Morning.
Good morning.
Wanted to bring you up to date. We have a building in Union, it was the old GMI building where they made the popcorn machines in it. Back in 2000, we bought that as outreach, which is a nonprofit. We operated our company there up until '12 when we bought a big building down in Des Moines. We're currently working with the Hardin County Industrial Development Person, Alicia, I think is how you pronounce her name.
Angela.
As well as with the rural development folks out of Iowa Falls to expand our operation in Union to include a mechanized meal packaging. Those of you who don't know us, and some of you do, I know, but we packaged a little under 600 million meals that we've donated to food banks and disaster relief and all those things since we started in 2004. With the COVID challenges and what's going to happen with volunteer organizations and the need that we are experiencing from food banks all over Iowa and all over the nation, because we do work all over America, as well as Canada and down in the Caribbean, packaging meals. The need is there, so we're attempting to work with the USDA rural development folks to bring a piece of equipment into Union. It'll create three to six jobs, a couple hundred thousand dollars into the local economy. It'll have the capacity to package a truckload of meals every two days, so it has a lot of capacity. I think that we had meetings yesterday, teleconference meetings, of course, with USDA folks and Brandon from up at Iowa Falls, trying to understand how we qualify for that. We may need some help from the Board of Supervisors. I know we're going to have to have a public notice. It'll be published, and because the meals may go across the entire state, they're trying to figure out if we have to have statewide notice because it's USDA funding. So the purpose this morning of my appearance is just to say we're working on it. Renee has been very helpful to us. We appreciate that. We don't know where it's going to go as far as USDA is concerned, and we hope that they'll work with us. We obviously have a 12, 35,000 square foot building in Des Moines. We could put that piece of equipment down there. I'm from Union, I don't want it to go to Des Moines, but we also know that even though Hardin County, Union is a depressed area, there are people that need a job, and there's people that need jobs in Des Moines. We hope that there's a way that the folks can help us to make sure we get it into Union. I don't know what to ask, I just want you to be aware of, we're, we're trying to get this done. And we appreciate the help that we've received to this point. We had a good meeting with Tom, with your emergency management folks, operation on Monday, I believe, thanks to Renee. We are just finishing up packaging 3 million meals with the Kansas State Emergency Management FEMA Group and the Kansas National Guard. We've talked to Lieutenant Governor of Iowa about doing that here in Iowa, and now, of course, Tom is involved, and maybe that'll happen. They're doing the same thing in Minnesota. It'd be nice if Iowa could be a little more proactive, but we'll see where that goes, so if you have questions, I'd be glad to address them, otherwise I suspect my five minutes is passed.
No, I've packaged a few for you, too, through the church. And if Renee's mentioned something about a letter of support from the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, we're going to get a decision today, Lance, from Brandon and Iowa Falls, if we qualify, which I'm having difficulty understanding why we wouldn't, but, you know, I'm not a bureaucrat, I'm an entrepreneur. If they say yes, that we do meet the qualification criteria, I will come back and ask for a letter from the Board. I do have a letter that Renee was kind enough to give us, which we have turned into USDA, and we may need more, but we just don't know right now, Lance.
And I think Angela from Economic Development also provided a letter for you, too, didn't she?
Yes, she did.
Yep. Okay.
So we've had good cooperation. We're just, we're just not being very successful in selling so far, so we'll keep working on it.
All right, well, let us know if there's more we can do.
Believe me, I shall.
Would it be okay if we authorized to, to write a letter of support if needed?
Right.
So we don't have to come back to the meeting again, we automatically have that authorization.
That'd be wonderful.
Is that, is that fair, Darrell? Yep.
Okay, I would make a motion to have a letter of support written by the Board of Supervisors if so needed by Floyd for his project.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll sign off. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you, Floyd.
Thank you.
Did we have a couple more people jump in that we need names?
There's a Galaxy S7, but it doesn't show that they're muted, but we can see their video. I chatted up, asked who they are, but I got no response.
Okay. Okay, doesn't look like anybody's there, so we'll come back when we see somebody pop in.
Well, they are there, they're muted.
Yeah, they're there, they're just.
Oh, there's Galaxy S7, we need you for the minutes, if you can please do that.
At least chat into the chat box.
Or chat into the bu, the chat box as to who you are, just so we have your name for the minutes. I will go ahead and move on to accept resignation of the Conservation Board member.
I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Conservation Board member. His name just left me.
Verl.
Yeah, Verl Duncan.
I will, I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Verl sat on that board for, he's in his second term. I know he doesn't want to get off the board, but it, at this time, it's in his best interest, and he really hurts to do it, but. And I'd like to thank him for all the service that he put in.
Yes, I was going to say that, too. Appreciate his years of service.
Any other, he wrote a nice letter also. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approves. Next I have is an appointment to fill his position as a vacancy. I did have one letter requesting that they, they're the ex-official member now, but they asked that they could be put on for the rest of the term ending in 2021. I remember, had to be a year and a half, yeah.
Well, I know you'd gotten a letter from Trent, and he did apply for one of the, or one of the seats that was available this last fall and had an excellent resume and has great experience that will serve the Conservation Board well. So I would go ahead and make a motion to appoint Trent Lambert to fill the vacancy on the Conservation Board.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I think we've covered most of it. This is to finish Verl's term, and then it will be up again in January of 2022.
And this will just, this will create a vacancy for the, the Board's
Ex-official.
Ex-official member, so.
So we should put that on for next week's agenda.
Correct, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is the Sheriff's Monthly Report.
I will make a motion to approve the Sheriff's Monthly Report for the month of May.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. This is the one I moved around, so discussion on non-elected employee salaries. It, it's time that our auditors need to know to get the books ready for July 1st. So we need to come up with a percent increase. I know we budgeted for a 1.3% increase to the employees. This is all your non, non-elected, non-
Right.
Deputies and non-salary.
Right.
Or not salary, but non-union.
Right. I do know there's going to be, due to the change in the insurance, we are going to have excess funds in most of the budgets also. So that will be a, you know, that's kind of a plus there. So I guess I-
I, I guess I'm, I'm okay with the 1.3% increase. I just, I just want to stress the fact that with that excess funding, when we approach the appropriations and approve appropriations later this month, that we take that in consideration, that maybe we shouldn't appropriate all the funding due to that.
I agree.
Or we stress to the department heads that even though the money's there, you don't have to spend it.
Right, well, yeah, we'll need to have a discussion or maybe department head meeting or something regarding that.
But that's a discussion.
That's for another day, right. So I guess, I mean, I don't, do you want to make a decision today, or you have it on for discussion?
It was a discuss, discuss only, it wasn't an action, but as discussion, I have no issues with the 1.3 that we budgeted for.
I don't, I don't really either, so.
That'll give Becca a direction on, and we can put it on next week's agenda, that'll help her out with getting ahead of the race a little bit.
However, just as another comment, I know over the last few years, we've recommended that the increases be based on the employee reviews, job reviews, job performance reviews, so not saying every employee would maybe get the 1.3, but it kind of limits it to that 1.3, which would not affect deputies under elected officials, but.
Gives flexibility into the department heads.
Correct.
With their employees.
Yes.
Okay. Well, from there, anything else on that one?
I don't think so.
Okay, now we have is an action on the Compensation Board recommendation. The Compensation Board recommended a 2.75 for the auditor, 2.75 for the county attorney, 2.75 for the recorder, 7.5 for the sheriff, 2.75 for the supervisors, and 2.75 for the treasurers. If I recall, the sheriffs is higher based on the facts, supply and demand for the deputies and with their union. They still negotiate their salaries to keep the sheriff in fairness and to keep everybody in check and fairness and try to keep employees
Correct.
Here. Their salaries need to increase, and that's why, part of the reason, I believe, his was recommended higher.
Right.
So the, right now, we're just acknowledging that that's what they turned in to us.
Right, so I'll make a motion to acknowledge the Compensation Board's recommendation.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? That does not mean we're approving it, that just means that we acknowledge the fact that's what they turned in.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we can go to the Approval of Compensation Increase Resolution, which is the same thing I just said, if that's what we want to do. I guess I have a recommendation that if we're doing the 1.3 to the employees, if we cut all these numbers in half, that would give a 1.375 and a 3.75 to the sheriff. And I would also have a recommendation that we pull the supervisors, which we can, out separate and vote separate on those. But what we do with everybody else, it has to be the same percentage up or down.
Correct.
So I was, I was just saying, cut everybody in half at this time. Take supervisors out, cut everybody in half, and that puts us in pretty good check with everybody else. But that's up to you to decide.
Okay, explain, so you would be cutting the Compensation Board's recommendation in half?
Yeah, which would be move everybody from 2.75 to 1.375, moving the sheriff to 3.75. And that, this is without the supervisors. That, that, these are just recommendations that you can choose how you want. I could give you the dollar amount increase at that recommendation.
For each one?
Yeah, I mean, it's, at 1.375, the auditor would get an 881 and some change. Dollar increase, county, county attorney is a 1,392 and some change increase, recorder is a 849 and change increase, sheriff would be a 3,248 and change increase. Supervisors would be a 5.16 and change increase. And treasurer would be a 876 and some change increase at, at cutting it in half. Otherwise, obviously, everything doubles.
My only concern in that is for the sheriff mainly. I mean, is that going to still provide a large enough difference between him and, and his, for him and his first deputy?
It's, it's a challenge. If I remember, the unions were 3% increase. It is a little bit over, but that doesn't keep up with the overtime and everything else that they don't get paid for.
Right.
And, I mean, you can come back at 75%, you can come back at 100%, 80%, any percent, we just have to do the same to everybody. Or you could do the full amount.
Well, I know I've talked with a couple of the department heads, and the budget has been set for the next year and approved. Revenues are not coming in the way they should. I realize that. I think next year's budget is going to be more difficult. And there's going to be probably more of a shortage next, in next year's budget.
And we are budgeted at the, at the recommendations.
Correct.
Yep.
Yep. I just, I feel like cutting it in half is a little excessive. And being as we do have the excess budgeted for insurance, so there is some leeway there that would help contribute to the carryover for the following year. I guess I would, I would make the recommendation that we go with allowing 75% of the proposed increase rather than just half. I know it's not a lot, but it does give them a little more leeway for them themselves and their first deputies. And I just, especially am more concerned about the sheriff. So I'd recommend 75% of the proposed increase be approved for the.
Are you doing that for all elected officials, or are you pulling the supervisors out?
I would agree to pull the supervisors out.
Okay, good. Would you go ahead and make a motion then?
Yes, I'll make a motion to allow 75% of the increase as proposed by the Compensation Board for all elected officials except the supervisors.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have the supervisors left to deal with.
I would recommend freezing the supervisor salaries.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I will second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have a Statement of Understanding, Central Iowa Community Services. This is what we do annually. It puts our employees at a percent. For example, Lynn Adams is at 95%. Jody Hamilton at 95%. Michelle Lochner is at 100%. That comes out of the
Region.
Regional, regional funding, and it's just a statement of understanding explaining that.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the Statement of Understanding for Central Iowa Community Services.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is a Change of Status for Community Services.
Make a motion to approve the Change of Status for Mary Nelson, the Friendship Club Coordinator effective June 1, 2020, and which would be allowing her to return to active employment as of June 1. She was furloughed from May 11 to May 31 due to COVID-19.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is Change of Status, Sheriff's Office.
Okay, I have, I'll make a motion to approve the Change of Status for Brooke Thiem effective May 26, 2020, as she will be going from full-time to part-time. And the hourly rate will be going from $16.76 an hour to $15 an hour.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And I have a, also, we'll make a motion to approve the Change of Status for Erica Leann Vargason. This is a hiring as, effective June 3, 2020, for permanent part-time help at an hourly rate of $15 an hour.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? You did say effective June 3, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. COVID update, Thomas.
So we're moving along. We've gotten direction from Homeland Security on the use of the grant dollars and what items will be purchased out of which grants, what are, what's allowed out of each grant. And then this week, we've had to ramp up our plan with Green Belt Home Care on testing in nursing homes and how employees and residents are getting tested. We're waiting for absolute guidance from the state, which will come out Friday. But we've ordered the test kits, we've ordered the PPE to go out and do the strike team to each of the care facilities in the county and get them, be ready to test as soon as we have the direct guidance from IDPH. And everything else is moving along as well as it can.
Sounds good. Thank you. Don't go too far, though. Next we have is a reopening of the county buildings.
Well, we also have under the COVID-19 update, we've got the policy statement for COVID-19 precautions that we need to-
Do you want to do that under COVID, or do you want to do that on reopening?
Do you want to do both of them under reopening? Would you prefer to do both of those then? Okay, all right, we'll do that.
I think it fits better there.
Okay.
So let's go to the reopening.
Okay.
I know, I know you guys worked on this. You want to go through it and tell us what you think? For reopening?
Yeah, so we looked at what the judicial system and Iowa State Association of Counties was putting out. We've had, we had Jody and Matt and Judge, District Judge Haney in on Zoom meetings to discuss how this process is going to flow. I ran these by Judge Haney when we finished him up. And the only thing that's not in here that we'll have to address at a later time, which the court, the judicial side has, has got task force on opening the court, task force on jury trials, task force on one other item in the court system. So this has gone by him. We sent it over to Darrell. We don't see any issues with this. But we're going to recommend a appointment-only opening at this point, and try that for two weeks and see how the flow goes. We've put in here a way to keep track of the people that are in the building and the number of customers that come to each window. We've got that process in here so that we don't fill the rotunda full of people waiting in front of a department. And so we also had Kerry Callaway with the security group in the meeting, and security's gonna take care of the heavy lift on keeping track of the number of people in the building, and who's in the building, and who has appointments, and who doesn't have appointments. So, so the public, the, and we labeled it very specifically, Harden County Courthouse Public Health Emergency Operating Guideline. Did that on purpose so that once COVID is over, we still have a guideline in case another, whatever the flavor of the year shows up next year, or in the future, we still have a process that can be pulled out and used to limit our number of people in the courthouse. And the policy statement that you have is from the public health side. We split this up, so Rocky Reince covered the, what needed to be covered as far as the public and how it would look from the outside, and how we tell the public that they can't come to the building if they're sick. We're gonna have signage, we'll maintain the signage that IDPH has already put out, that if you have signs and symptoms, you're asked to not come in. We stopped short of doing temperature checks, but we are gonna make sure we maintain a list of people in the building. So if there is an exposure, we will have a way to contact, make contact tracing from that exposure. So that's all. And we've got some of the floor markings up there. There'll be some more ordered and put in place, but we'll run through that.
Okay, this is a Harden County Courthouse policy. We have the reopening of the building, so I'm assuming this policy would go for all buildings?
Yes.
Except we don't have security at the other.
Well, and so it was, yeah, this guideline really is for the.
Courthouse.
Courthouse, because like Taylor's office, there's probably only one or two people come out there, so it's not like they're gonna have, like we're overrunning that room with the number of people in there, and there's a counter space there so they can limit their contact with them. The other was over here at the Administration Building, was they already have locked doors, and they have a receptionist there that has to check people in. You can't get through that door unless you've talked to the receptionist, so she will already have a way to know who's up. And I'm guessing that Darrell and Community Services probably don't take more than one person at a time anyway, just because of privacy and all of that. Isn't that correct? That's kind of how we, that's kind of how we looked at it, was that's a locked building already?
We can manage the number of people that are coming in and out, so.
You know how many people are coming to your office?
Yep.
Yeah.
So I guess I would maybe recommend for over there that you would have someone maintain a list of people that are in and out, and maybe times like we are doing here, in case you do find out there was an exposure, and then you would be able to contact people.
We can, we can make, we can change this and do that so that even Taylor's office would be able to keep track of who's in there, have the contact information. In case there was a problem, then there'd be a way to trace back who was in the building at the same time the individual was. Because Taylor might be there, but the secretary might not be there. The secretary might be there, and Taylor not be there, so we wouldn't have to worry about all of that. So I'll add that 21 in here, and we can just make it a Harden County building.
Well, I, I think, I think we're addressing two different things. Very similar, so, I mean, I'm okay with the Harden County Courthouse on the statement, because this is what we will do here.
And just do another.
Yeah, 21 should say something online. All other public offices will be, Darrell, I'm looking for, for some words. You usually have them, but to add.
For similar procedures and.
So we could change this Harden County Courthouse and public offices, and Addendum 21 would say more of, public offices would be a similar.
Well, we can, they'll maintain.
As they can maintain their own.
Schedule and contacts. Because they'll have to maintain a contact list for 14 days.
For today's purposes, I think that's sufficient. We're looking at a two-week window right now anyway, so. And that'll at least cover what we're trying to accomplish today.
Okay. So the next thing is, when are we gonna open? I've heard two different dates, when we're at the department head, possibly tomorrow or possibly Monday?
I believe it's Monday, the 8th.
We'd recommend Monday.
It's our recommendation.
So that we can have everything ready to go.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion for that?
Approving these documents and the opening date of the 8th?
Yes.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the policy statement for the COVID-19 precautions and the Harden County Courthouse Public Health Emergency Operating Guidelines to be approved for use as of the opening of the courthouse on June 8th.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? That is what those extra changes put in.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. People can come in, appointment only, and there's a procedure to come in. Now I have is public comments. Let's unmute all so people can comment.
Did we get everyone's contact or names also? Okay.
Are they all unmuted?
They can unmute themselves.
Anybody can unmute themselves if they'd like to speak, public comments? Hearing no public comments, I can move to other business.
Lana?
Oh, I have one. Who do I have?
Can you hear me now?
Donna?
Yeah, can you hear me? You can hear me now.
I can hear you. There you go.
I have a question for Taylor. Is he there?
Yes, he is.
What is the plan for rock on the side roads this year?
So each of the 10 motor graders turned me in a map of where they thought the rock, and Greg and I went out and checked. Majority of what the motor graders recommended, we went with. We bought 90,000 tons of rock this year, so that's about 50% more than they were doing, not last year, but the years before that. So, yeah, not every road's getting rock, of course, because we can never afford that. But, yeah, if anyone's curious, they can always call our office. We can tell them they're on the map. If they think they should be on the map, we can look into it, but, yeah. You know, we make these maps in March, April, so things change. But, yeah, that was kind of our original plan.
Okay, my, my concern was also for the roads with those nasty, nasty sand bits.
As in the, all the trucks that haul because of that?
No, it's just when it rains heavy and you're trying to drive down the road, there are areas in the road that have an extreme amount of sand in a spot.
Yep, that would be from the rock getting beat on repeatedly by some traffic all day, and that rock breaks down to become sand. Yeah.
Right. And I'm hoping your graders are making note of those areas?
Yes, they should know their route pretty well, driving it every week.
I mean, make note to you.
If they need to, they will.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other public comments? Hearing no other ones, any other business? I don't have any.
I don't have any.
I can ask that we recess until our 10 o'clock.
Okay, I'll make a motion to recess.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are recessed till 10 o'clock.